Well, good morning, everyone. Welcome to this Wednesday, September 10th, regular council meeting. I will call our meeting to order at 9:01 a.m., and I'll ask everyone to stand for the singing of our national anthem. Are there any additions to the agenda this morning?
Good morning, Madam Mayor, members of council. There are no additions from administration.
Any from council? Is there a member of council that would like to approve the agenda for the September 10th, 2025 regular meeting of council as presented? Councilor Kamana, thank you very much. All in favor? That is carried. Any corrections or amendments to the August 27th, 2025 regular meeting of council minutes? Is there a member of council that would like to approve the August 27th, 2025 regular meeting? Thank you, Councilor Clark. All in favor? That is carried. No proclamations, no public hearings. We do have one delegation this morning, 6.1, Drayton Valley Comprehensive Family Violence Institute. We have Mr. Stephen Dawes here this morning, I believe, presenting to us. Good morning and welcome. Are you presenting with Stephen this morning?
I'm just here for support.
You're just here for support? Perfect, thank you. Well, good morning. Yeah, just make sure the green light is on.
Okay. Ooh, testing, testing, okay. Well, thank you for having me here today. I'm just coming back to, well, first, I'd like to extend a thank you to the council for coming out and supporting us and walking, including Tom there, putting on a hero's effort in that, in those shoes. I'm surprised we didn't lose anybody on that day, but we managed to make it through. So I did want to thank everyone for coming out and supporting us in that. That was very appreciated. Without that fundraising that we did there, we probably wouldn't be able to run our program this, this time, right now. So I just wanted to sort of update the council on where we were with our funding. So unfortunately, we did not get our government grant from the province. So we are currently looking for other funding sources at this time, but as of January, we don't have funding going forward to be able to pursue more courses. So we're looking at other options right now. We're definitely in that fight to try to keep the program here in Drayton Valley. It's been going for 30 years, and we hate to see it drop off in 2026, but such is life right now. So, yeah, we have, we've seen a, a big boost in, in people wanting to come in to take the program, especially given that this might be the last time that they actually get an opportunity to take it for free. The province has cut off other programs as well, so I believe probation had gotten in touch with us as well and said that the other program that they would normally refer to out of the city that would sort of be in competition with us, but they do an online program, they also lost their funding, and I think the province is looking at going to an online model. But if any of you guys had kids during the COVID years in schools, you might not remember how well the online learning programs went for that, wasn't the best. As someone that was working in schools at that time, it was incredibly frustrating to try to keep people online and actually doing stuff. It was very difficult to actually make sure people were picking up what you're putting down. That's one of the real benefits of our program, is that we actually provide in-person, in-person courses, so that I can make sure people aren't looking at a different tab and checking their fantasy football scores, they're actually looking at the, at what we're presenting to them. So that's been a really, sort of disappointing part of, of the, of losing the funding, is that they are, it appears that they're looking to go towards an online model. And I just don't think that's really effective, especially when we're dealing with something as serious as domestic violence and, and intimate partner abuse. We, we've had some really good results over the years. We've seen a lot of people really turn a new page in their life and had really transformational change, and it is somewhat unfortunate that, that the province doesn't see that value in it at this, at this time, or they've chosen to go a different direction. So that's unfortunate for us and, and our community, I think, as a whole, that we potentially might lose this program. I know a lot of people speak very highly of the program and, and, you know, we've helped a lot of people, a lot of families stick together and, and figure things out because of this program, and it is sort of a, it's a tough one to see it go. So, yeah, that's sort of what I've got to say about that, sir.
Perfect, thank you very much for that. Yeah, and thank you for hosting the Walk a Mile in the Red Shoes. I know that we had some very good walkers, I guess I would say, good walkers or great walkers, runners, dancers. I think we have a couple in the room that did exceptionally well. So thank you for that. Thanks for coming out, supporting this good cause. It was, it was nice to see, and it was nice to see so many men getting involved, so thank you for doing that, and thank you for the program. Have you, I will open it up for questions from councillors. Just a quick question for me. Have you presented or had a discussion with the MLA?
Yes, actually, Andrew was quite helpful to us in our, in our bid. He wrote letters, and I'd also like to thank the council for your letter as well. We sent that all in, and since then, Andrew has actually followed up a couple times with the minister as well to see if there's anything they can do. So far, we haven't heard back, but he's sent in, I think, two, two letters now, and also had a face-to-face conversation with them, and as far as we can tell right now, that has not been fruitful, but we'll keep the pedal to the metal on that one, for sure.
And then I think in Staff Sergeant Ryan's report, usually, we're hearing that mischief and domestic violence and abuse and things like that are at an all-time high, and they're one of the, the highest that are being reported. So it is very unfortunate when you look at those stats, and then you look at this program that is helping families and helping individuals, and it's being cut, right? It's, that's, yeah, it, it just doesn't match. I'll open it up for questions. Councilor Clark?
Thanks for the presentation, Stephen. So like, how, how short are you guys in terms of funding currently?
So, going into, we, I think we run out of money in December, which is the end of our course. So basically, as of December, I think 15th, I think, we're out of money, so we won't be able to continue as of then. So, I mean, I guess, based on our year, I think we would be, probably in the area of, we'd probably be at like 30% funding right now, and so I would be able to say the number, but it's, it's more of an estimate. I think we're sort of like about 60 short, 60 or 70 short, I would imagine. Lola wants to jump in on this, because she's, she's better on numbers than I am.
Sure. Good morning.
Yeah, so the annual budget for the program is just over $90,000 a year. Typically, the program does also apply for FCSS funding as well. On top of that provincial grant, they usually get anywhere from $6,000 to $8,000 or so, so it's, it's just under $100,000 a year for, to, to run the program, the two, the two groups per year, plus the counselling sessions.
And then I just want to do a follow-up question off of Councilor Clark. So FCSS typically, you said, has supported this between 6 to 8. So we're going into, are we going into the third or the fourth quarter? It's always ahead for FTS.
So this will be the third quarter. There's a fall grant round happening right now.
And do we have a lot of applicants?
I'm not sure how many applicants we've received so far, but the funding that is available through FCSS currently is just the surplus amount from last year. The board had already granted out the entire $120,000 budget for this year, so there's not much funding remaining. And family violence can go ahead and apply for FCSS funding for next year as well, but, I mean, it's, it's over a $90,000 program, and so it's not something that FCSS is, is going to be able to, to carry at all. I did request from the minister, because I did have a meeting with him about FCSS, just actually the day that we found out that the funding was cut, and, and asked for, requested additional information for other grants, or even additional information about where do we refer people to now, especially those that are going through the court system, because probation does refer people through that route as well. And sort of the comment was, let the dust settle, more information will be coming out.
Go ahead, Councilor Clark.
Because we know the provincial government is really good at communicating, like, do we, do we have any sort of feeling as if they're going to come up with a different program, like, cut this and maybe we'll throw something else out there and just not telling us at this particular moment?
It, it sounds like it could be an online program.
I don't know if there's a timeline for that, though, either, that I haven't really said, and I believe it would be more along the lines of the anger management side of things, which is very important, for sure. But if you're missing that domestic violence piece and the accessibility for not just perpetrators, but also victims to be able to take our course, I think that's really helpful. So we run our women's group and our men's group, and there's, I'd say about anywhere, any given time, there's about 30 to 50% of them in the men's group are mandated to be there, and I'd say about 10% at most, usually in the women's program, that are mandated to be there. The mandated part is really important, because those people actually need that in order to carry on with their lives, whether it's through Children's Services or probation. But I find that people that are taking that course are getting such a huge return on investment in their lives in terms of counselling, because they get at least three sessions with me at a minimum that they have to take, and then they get additional sessions on top of that. I know extra charge, and it can be pretty tough to access counselling. I think some of the going rates are anywhere between $170 to $100 or $220 an hour. If you don't have benefits, if you're not covered through AHS, through other programs, whatever, that's pretty prohibitive for a lot of families to access on more than a occasional basis. So we do provide a pretty essential service in terms of that, and so, yeah, that's another thing that they wouldn't get with that online stuff, is they don't have the, the access to counselling.
Right, and I guess that'd be, that'd be another question, so do, would you have a view as to whether or not it would be sort of hybrid, where it's facilitated versus point and click, or, or do you know?
We haven't really heard anything from them on that side. We didn't really hear about whether we were getting our funding or not until two days before we weren't getting our funding, so, like you said, they're super great on getting back to us on that, so it's kind of a, yeah. It's, makes it a little bit difficult for us to plan, too. If we'd known in June, July that we weren't getting the money, we could have responded differently. I mean, we still were working hard to find other funding sources, but it's, makes it a little more challenging when we're not guaranteed and don't know what's coming or going, so.
Lola?
We have been down this road before. I don't know if anyone here is familiar with the Parenting After Separation Program. Once upon a time, we had the contract with Justice to offer that program in person. This, I almost, having deja vu now, because the same circumstance happened, all of a sudden, we had no funding. No one had funding, we had no idea what was happening, and in fact, they did go to an online program. The online program that they ended up sharing province-wide is just a click, it's just you sign on, there, there's, there's no, there's, yeah, there's no accountability at all, because you can just have somebody sit there for you, just click through the program, not watch a video, not read any of the content. The content is fine, the material is, is good, but there's no mechanism to make sure that you're actually even paying any attention. You just click through, and at the end, you print off your certificate, and then you can present that with the court. And former Staff Sergeant, and myself, and Rita Dillon, who was actually the developer of this specific program, went all the way to the legislative building to meet with the minister to talk about how ineffective online programming is, and they went, they went ahead anyway, so, so I, I fear that that's what's happening here, and, and this is about domestic violence now.
Councilor Kamana?
The outcomes are not good.
Thank you, thank you, Stephen. Just wondering about, you know, you mentioned that the town has given some letters for advocacy, as well as the MLA. Is there anything you think that, as the town, we could do to help?
Well, I mean, hey, if you got $60,000, right?
Right, yeah.
I take cash payments as well, yeah. I mean, you know, we really appreciated the, the letter of support, that was really fantastic. You know, we want, we, we, it goes a long way to show that you guys are behind us and willing to support us in that. Continuing that support would be fantastic, as we continue to apply for stuff as well. If there's some availability somewhere at some time that we can, we, we, we would eventually like to get off of provincial funding. We have opt, we have off-road, we have ways that we can do that, so perhaps supporting those in the future as well. Right now, we have a program through the Wildrose School Division that's also helping fund our, that's helped fund our stuff as well, so that's been really good. So just sort of helping us with some of those initiatives as well would be great, getting our name out there, promotions, that sort of thing, that always helps. And advocating on our behalf would also go a long way when we're talking about, like, the province and stuff like that, because they are essentially our main funder, so if we can keep the pressure on them to understand that, you know, that we're not in Edmonton, we don't have thousands of resources that are tightly locked into the massive system there, so when things get cut out here, our people feel it pretty hard compared to Edmonton, so there's not the same resource base in that way. So that would be generally helpful, I would say, as well. And honestly, if people, like, if people want to, to help out, we always have, like, fundraisers and stuff we're going to do throughout the year and, and different things like that, you're always welcome to go run another lap in the shoes if you want to give her a rip, try to get you two, a left and a right, but no promises. Still a tasteful wedge for Tom. Yeah, so, I mean, obviously, if, if, if there's a way that we can find funding, or if you guys have, hear of things that would come up, that'd be fantastic. I mean, if you want to put that as part of your budget, then, hey, I won't fight you on it. Certainly won't come at you for that.
No, thank you for that. I'm sure we'll have a discussion about that later. Thank you.
Councilor McGee?
I do have a couple of questions. Steve, this, this budget also is reflects on your job.
Yes.
So without that, you're, you, you have to make a decision on moving or changing jobs or doing that, is that correct?
To a certain degree, yes. I still have my private practice that I run as well for counselling, but this would definitely be difficult for me to stay on in that sort of role without money, so kind of a tough one there. We're looking at, at some options, like I said, to, to make sure that that can happen, but at the same time, like, at the end of the day, my, my mortgage company doesn't really care if the program goes forward or not, they, they seem to just want the cash. So that's sort of what we're dealing with there. It is, I will say, it is a struggle trying to find the proper qualifications for this program in Drayton. So I know in previous years, they had gone with another person to run the program, they didn't quite have the qualifications needed, and as such, the province at that time had reduced the budget in line with paying that person. And then when I came in, trying to get that money back was impossible, and that never happened. So that, that was a, a struggle, and also then we had to, we had to subcontract counselling out to another organization, Burden Bear, so that they could help, so they could have the counselling piece, because the other person was, was qualified to run the course, wasn't, didn't have the qualifications to provide the counselling. So you need to have either, like, a psychologist or a master's level social worker, which I am, in order to do both parts of the counselling and the facilitation of the course. So without that, and that's, we're not exactly everywhere, so it's, it can be a little bit tricky to find that in a, in a smaller community, but...
And, and that was what I was driving at. Here we have the, the quality of, of work here in our community, and so just to, just to blow it off, doesn't seem right. There's got to be a, a way for us to, to figure out how we can manage that. So have you done a, a deep dive into how many people actually in Alberta, let's use just Alberta at this point, I guess, because it's the Alberta government, that are affected by this in small communities and...
Well, I would say, we've been running the course for about 30 years, so I think we've had direct impact on about anywhere 3,500 Drayton Valley, Brazu County area residents. Do I think we get, we don't get to everybody. I think the police numbers would, would attest to that. We're working very hard to make sure that we can do that with our school program. We want, hopefully, someday, I don't have to have this job, you know? My, my role as a social worker should be to eventually work my way out of a job. I don't, we shouldn't have to deal with this problem forever, but such is the nature of humans, we tend to get angry and do dumb things. So that does happen, right? And we're gonna, we're gonna run into that in the future. Unfortunately, domestic violence, the reason this program got started is because of a murder-suicide about 35 years ago in this town. And so I would like for us to never have to face that again, and I, I'm not going to say, sit here and say that, like, our program's going to stop that from ever happening, but we're the, the best chance that we have of, of doing that.
Yeah, the bridge, and I, I was thinking more about if you've got a group of people that are affected, I'm thinking Rocky Mountain House, White Court, you know, the city's mayor's, if, if everybody's getting the same, has the same issue today, because you've, you've taken the program and you pulled it, that kind of weight sometimes is, is, is better. But I also think about the opportunities for us to sit down with not only our MLA, but any of the other MLAs and ministers to say, this important one-on-one thing at 100 grand, that's all it is, right? So and then you have to look at what you get for your money.
Yeah.
And that's where I'm coming from, is that if we can, if we could put that on, you know, because in, in, in the big scheme of a budget at the Alberta government, it's just, I'm trying to shave a little off, and this is where we're shaving it, I don't know what's going to happen, but the, the dominoes will fall.
Yeah.
But we, when we're advocating, we, we may not know what it really means, right? Unless you're really are, are there, and you're involved in it, and you're concerned with it, and so that's, for me, but I, I guess that's what we can do, is, is drive harder, and you've also heard the argument that, and we're faced with it with our unhoused, is that it's, it's not a municipal issue, it's a provincial issue. And in reality, it's, you cannot be arguing both, right? It's, it's right here in your, in your community, and are you ready to put a line item for this, right? And that's really a very good question, one that we need to address.
Yeah.
That's just a statement.
Yeah, well, I appreciate it, yeah. It is, it is, I think, something that if we don't pay for it upfront, we're going to pay triple the cost on the back end. We'll see what happens when, you know, we're not the only program that got cut in this area, lots of, lots of programs got cut, so we'll see what the fallout of that is. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I guess the only thing left is where to from here.
Yeah, I know, it feels hopeless, right? Do you think when you, you know, as you had mentioned, Councilor McGee, it's only 100,000, right? And that's so small when you're looking at a provincial budget? And I know that the provinces, you know, made it very loud and clear with the, the four new pillars when it comes to healthcare and, and mental health and addiction and all that is at the forefront of that, but yet, when you look at, and you talk about the costs that are associated, and, and then, you know, not cancelling all these programs, then what that outcome is, and then when you look at the stats from our RCMP, it, it just doesn't match with the programs that are being cut and, and what they're being replaced with. I agree that the online just isn't the same if you can just have someone else do it for you or click, there's no presence, there's no communication, there's no, you know, face-to-face, it's, if it was a face-to-face still, then it, you know, maybe it would be considerable, but when you're not having that human interaction, even if it's through a screen or in person, it's missing, right? So I don't know what the solution is. We can definitely, you know, have a discussion when it comes to our budget in the future, it can be added as an item line, you know, just, I can't make promises. We have a lot of things that get added to our, our budget. We're working with, you know, a, a much smaller budget than provincially they're working with. We can continue our role for advocacy, and I know that sending a letter is just sending a letter, but I think we need to continue pushing, you know, maybe it's a joint with Brazzo County and the MLA, and really start pushing, you know, harder, and including the piece from the stats with the RCMP as well, saying that this goes hand-in-hand, and, you know, if it's our number one, you know, crime stat in our community, what are we doing to lower that? We're not doing anything, right? We're, we're doing the opposite. So I don't know if anyone else has any other suggestions? Councilor Clark?
The, the other issue I was going to raise was just, I mean, it seems there's a one-size-fits-all approach by, by the provincial government, and, and I mean, when we look at, like, you're talking about resources rurally versus urban, right? Like, we don't have the resources there, and when we do, why can't we leverage them? You know, it seems we've been sort of cut off at the knees here in terms of, of, you know, accessing something that is local and, and available, so, I mean, I think, I don't know if we kind of discuss the issue of rural versus urban, and, you know, and the disproportionate funding that generally goes to those areas, and this is just another example that I think, so.
It is, absolutely, it is. Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you very much for coming in today. We'll do our best to continue this fight for you, and like I said, we'll ensure that it's on, or part of our discussion when it comes to budgets this coming fall, and, you know, I guess we'll just keep pushing our MLA to be working with us, Brazzo County to be working, sending another letter, like I said, we can make a motion if council is in favor after, you know, business arising, if that's something we want to do, and just looking at other ways that we can help you raise the money. Maybe just one last question. You talked about fundraisers, and I know that you did the Walk a Mile in the Red Shoes. Do you have any other plans for the end of the year?
I, we haven't, we haven't solidified on anything. We are looking at a few grants that we've been sort of focusing on, and then we've also been looking at some other funding sources through Paul Band, we've been looking at going out there, providing our program out there, just to keep sort of the funding going and doing that sort of stuff, just keeping the program alive until we can get more funding. But as of right now, we haven't, we haven't proceeded with any formal plans to, to do another fundraiser. We'll see what we can come up with here in the next little bit, but we are running the program again right now, so... Like, we don't have the resources there, and when we do, why can't we leverage them? You know, it seems we've been sort of cut off at the knees here in terms of, of, you know, accessing something that is local and, and available. So, I mean, I think, I don't know if we kind of discuss the issue of rural versus urban and, you know, and the disproportionate funding that generally goes to those areas. Um, and this is just another example that I think, so...
It is, absolutely, it is. Um, any other questions or comments? Well, thank you very much for coming in today. Um, we'll do our best to continue this fight for you, and like I said, we'll ensure that it's on, uh, or part of our discussion, uh, when it comes to budgets this coming fall. And, you know, I guess we'll just keep pushing our MLA, uh, to be working with us, Brazzo County to be working, sending another letter. Like I said, we can make a motion if council is in favor after, um, you know, business arising, if that's something we wanna do, and just looking at other ways that we can help you raise the money. Um, maybe just one last question. You talked about fundraisers, and I know that you did the Walk a Mile in the Red Shoes. Do you have any other plan, um, for the end of the year?
Um, I, we haven't, uh, we haven't solidified on anything. We are looking at a few, um, grants that we've been sort of focusing on. Uh, and then we've also been looking at some other funding sources, uh, through, uh, Paul Band. We've been looking at going out there, providing our program out there, just to keep sort of the funding going and doing that sort of stuff, uh, just keeping the program alive until we can get more funding. But as of right now, we haven't, uh, we haven't proceeded with any formal plans to, to do another fundraiser. We'll see what we can come up with here in the next little bit, but we are running the program again right now. So, I do have to focus a little bit more on actually doing that part, as opposed to just trying to get money for it. Um, so, because that's kind of what they did hire me to do, so I better do that part, for sure. Uh, yeah. But we're, we're definitely looking at all options right now. All options are on the table, so full court press for us at this point, because there really isn't any other option for us at this point, so...
Yeah, and maybe there's another group or organization that you could even partner with, right? To help raise, I can't think of anybody right now, but, you know, maybe there is potential for that as well. Well, thank you very much for coming in, and, uh, not a good news story today, but we'll keep pushing and advocating and, and helping the best that we can. So, appreciate everything that you're doing to, um, help, uh, lower the stats and, and deal with the situation the best that you can. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. Hopefully, just a speed bump, and we'll be back in action.
Absolutely, right? Yeah.
Yeah. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, so that is that it for, uh, delegations this morning. Business arising from delegations, um, what are we thinking? Um, is there a member of council that would like to make, thank you, a, a motion to maybe send a, a joint letter with stats again to the minister, um, seeing if we can get Brazzo County and our MLA to push again?
Uh, with, with a focus on in-person instead of, you know, the online.
Online, yeah. And Lola, do you have some of those, um, I guess, stats or information, like how previous programs haven't done so well, that maybe we could include in that as well? Just some facts and things like that? Ms. Whaley?
May I also suggest that we include the fact that, uh, if you're cutting programs for access in rural areas, rural broadband hasn't also been addressed by the province.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. That is a good point, both you and, and councillor Clark, and, uh, we seem to always get, lack the resources in rural communities more and more, and then not having the connectivity as well. Uh, councillor Kamana?
Yeah, no, I agree with that. I just wanted to remind, um, you know, we talked about, uh, collaborating with, um, other organizations. Um, I believe that Project Cup of Drayton Valley is, uh, planning a, uh, mental health symposium, uh, to, uh, bring all the, uh, mental health-related organizations together to, uh, discuss about, you know, uh, the issues that they're facing, and how to, uh, I guess, move, make things better in, in our community in the sense of mental health. So maybe that's a, a, a good connection point for Stephen as well, for that. Just wanted to remind that, too.
That is, when is that happening?
I believe, uh, for, beginning of next year, that's, that's what they are, they are planning. We just, uh, I just wanted to get all the ducks in a row first, before they, they go with that.
That is good. Um, is there a member of council that would like to make a motion, maybe, then, to do that? Councillor Kamana?
Sure, yeah, I'll make a motion that, uh, we would, uh, write another advocacy letter to the, uh, uh, provincial government, um, stating the importance of, uh, the current program, as well as, um, pointing out the, um, the concerns, um, going full on, uh, online, uh, courses, especially for rural, uh, Alberta.
Lack of resources for rural, yeah. Did you get that, Ms. Thompson?
I think so.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Did you wanna read the motion back? Okay. Good. Okay, perfect, thank you for that. Any comment, question, uh, debate on the motion? Then I'll call the motion all in favor. That is carried. Thank you very much for that. Uh, moving along, uh, we'll jump into our decision items. We have a, uh, very brief agenda this morning. First up is eight point one, Town of Drayton Valley Municipal Library Board Bylaw twenty-twenty-five-zero-one-B. Uh, this is for second and third reading. Ms. Whaley?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Uh, as you know, we have done first reading on this and have referred the, uh, draft Municipal Library Board Bylaw to the library board for feedback. Their feedback has been incorporated, and all changes are in compliance with the Libraries Act. Uh, so we are asking for second and third reading today of the bylaw.
Perfect, thank you very much for that. Uh, any questions for administration? Councillor McGee?
Only one, uh, I, I, I take it that everybody, uh, the library board is bringing this forward to us i- in order to move it through, uh, and that everybody's, um, on board and in favor of, of these changes. They're not wildly different, but they're there.
Through the chair to councillor McGee. Um, this was actually triggered because we're trying to review all of the policies and bylaws of the town. Uh, so when the MOU came up for renewal, that triggered us to look for anything library-related in policies or bylaws. Uh, the previous bylaw was actually in non-compliance with the current Libraries Act. So we made the changes, referred it to the library board for feedback, incorporated their feedback, confirmed it was in compliance with the act, and are now asking for the second and third reading.
And the library board is on, understands and, and, and not...
Captured?
Yeah, okay, good.
The library board is on board. Uh, if there's no other questions, is there a member of council that would like to make a motion for second reading? Councillor Sheriffs?
I'll make a motion that council give Drayton Valley Municipal Library Board Bylaw twenty-twenty-five-zero-one-B second reading.
Thank you very much for that. Uh, any comment, question, debate on the motion? Then I'll call the motion all in favor. That is carried. Is there a member of council that would like to make a motion for third reading, uh, for Bylaw twenty-twenty-five-zero-one-B?
I would do that, Madam Mayor. If the council make a motion that council give Drayton Valley Municipal Library Board Bylaw twenty-twenty-five-zero-one-B third reading, and third and final reading.
Perfect, thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? Then I'll call the motion all in favor. That is carried. That is it, I believe. I don't have the motion, but thank you, that was it. Uh, next up is eight point two, project budget reallocation request. Ms. Whaley?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. In the two thousand and three capital budget discussions, fifty thousand was approved for furnishings for the, uh, then Clean Energy Technology Centre. Uh, this included desks and chairs for students. These funds were never spent, as the programming types offered by the previous post-secondary institute were not able to be replicated. Uh, administration is asking that the previously approved and carried over dollars be reallocated to augment the capital sidewalk replacement budget for the twenty-twenty-five capital year. There are no actual new requests for money in this, it is just a reallocation, because it was originally approved in a, in a capital project.
Perfect, thank you very much for that. Any questions for Ms. Whaley? Councillor Kamana?
Uh, thank you, uh, Ms. Whaley, just for understanding, um, I believe that, uh, the, the current location of the, um, education initiatives, um, you know, it, it's excellent that, that we've, we are filling that building up. And there's no question that, um, it would be vital to have the sidewalks, uh, all, all done a nice, but, um, if come next year, um, we would need to relocate these education initiatives to a, to a different, um, location, or look at other options. Um, do you think, uh, this funding would be, uh, important to, to have it in the, uh, the budget as allocated?
Uh, through the chair to councillor Kamana, we have actually had to relocate many student desks and chairs into storage, um, because of the current tenants of the building not requiring them. The reason the initial fifty thousand was put in the budget was when Norquest left, they had their own furniture and took it with them. Uh, so, the current user groups that we have that operate the building, uh, including Northern Lakes College, U of C, U of A, um, and Alberta Campus, don't have the requirements for the furniture.
Right. Uh, with, with the current format and the current, uh, situation, they are right?
Correct.
But if, do you think that we may need to pivot, uh, by next year?
I would suggest through the chair to councillor Kamana, that if we pivoted, we would be coming in asking for more technology-based or trades-based. Uh, so again, it would have to be reallocated. And in this case, it would be much more than fifty thousand, so...
No, I understand, thank you.
Any other questions? Uh, so with this in the report, it does say, um, many of the, or five sidewalks have worsened. Do we know, is it part of our sidewalk and replacement plan, so whatever's next on the list? Is that kind of how, what the intention is, or...
Uh, Madam Chair, to members of council, the sidewalk, um, review was done, I believe, in twenty eighteen, uh, since, and nothing had been done until this capital project year. Since that initiative was done, there were sides to the already fives that were going to be moved up to fives, so they've just been handled so that they don't, uh, get worse at the same time. So it, they've already been replaced, this just will ensure that they're not over budget.
Oh, okay, so this is just add to the sidewalk and replacement budget?
Yes, so when we do a review of things and then don't touch it for seven years, they, things beside those things get worse too.
And then would, um, so this would be the replacement for the twenty-twenty-five capital year, so we'd still be able to complete this for this year?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. And then just to, um, clarify too, to councillor Kamana's questions, there would be no intention for this year that we're needing with, um, the new school, uh, Roots of Resilience School, along with our post-secondary partners, there would be no need for any additional furniture that we can foresee in the next...
No, ma'am.
...year. Perfect. Uh, okay, if there's no further questions, is there a member of council that would like to make a motion? Councillor Sheriffs?
Uh, I need to, uh, um, I'll make a motion that council approved the reallocation of the previously budgeted fifty thousand dollars from CP four-nine-nine CTC furnishing to CP five-one-six sidewalk replacement project.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? Then I'll call the motion all in favor. That is carried. Thank you very much. Uh, last for decision items is eight point three, community and collaboration. This is our outdoor rink. Uh, Ms. Heather Pollard, good morning and welcome.
Well, I'm just here to kind of, I kind of had this idea, and the staff are very on-board with it, is we've had, ice is a shortage, especially in the evenings, and we've had a lot of complaints about the outdoor rink and just the maintenance and such. So we decided, nobody makes better ice than us. And we thought, just tooting our own horn here, we thought maybe it would be a really good idea if we took ownership of, ownership of it, and maybe collaborated it, uh, collaborated with, uh, a community group, and to see if we could all work together to keep the maintenance up and make it more usable for the community.
So in the past, uh, we've done this exact same thing, did we not, a few years ago?
Uh, what we did is we put it out, uh, when Annette was here, she had a contract that she did put out, but people didn't want to sign it, because it was quite wordy, quite lengthy, um, frankly, off-putting, right? When people want to volunteer, they don't want to get caught up in twenty-five, seven, you know, all these pieces of paper. So what we thought we would do is do it very similar to the minor ball. And the minor ball is we collaborate with them, so they do maintenance, we do maintenance, and everybody works together to make the fields good.
So much simpler than what we've had before?
Yes, I think it'd be...
A different partnership.
And in return, we also could offer, um, advertising there, that kind of thing, if a company maybe wanted to say, hey, we'll give you a bobcat once a week, or a group that has a business, or we're not opposed to anything, we're hoping just somebody wants to work with us to kind of help make that outdoor rink, uh, more usable.
And who would be responsible for maintaining, like flooding the rink, and then clearing and cleaning and things like that?
And that's what it would be, is we would work with a group on that. So we would do, um, and we can also teach, uh, the members in the public as well, um, about keeping up the ice, the maintenance. We would do some of it, and then we would work with a group to do some of it. Like with minor ball, we do, once a week, we do the maintenance to all the ball diamonds and such, and then they do an extra cut and an extra float that they want. So that's kind of what we would do with that.
And what I'm kind of hearing in the community is maybe we're not doing the best job when it comes to clearing that, so this would help mitigate that and ensure that it's cleared for residents and things.
Yes, I think...
Yeah, and, and Madam Chair, obviously, we have a set number of staff, so while we would endeavor to clear the rink as quickly as possible, it is definitely less of a priority than major sidewalks, the roads, so...
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
So any questions for Ms. Pollard this morning? What is everyone thinking on...
Well, I, I don't have any questions, but I, I think we, it's, it's an obvious, uh, we should be doing this, and we should have people, uh, and people will step up to the plate, as you say, if we can lessen the paperwork and just, just getting it done, and, uh, people respected for what they do, uh, and how they do it, and recognize it to some degree at the end of, you know, the hockey season, and...
Yep.
I think, I think it's terrific, um, and I'm prepared to make that motion.
Perfect.
Any other questions?
Uh, no, it doesn't look like there's any other questions. If you want to make the motion, go ahead, councillor McGee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, that I would make a motion to the council of direct administration to send out a request for proposal to the community for collaboration between the town and the community group to help with the upkeep of the outdoor rink.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? Then I'll call the motion all in favor. That is carried. Thank you very much. Uh, so that wraps up our decision items. Uh, next up, we have our council reports. Councillor Kamana, you are up. Shoot, wow! That came fast, right?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, uh, on the eleventh, at the DVHTA monthly meeting, uh, there was some funding requests which we approved, um, and, uh, yeah, there's not a whole lot to, uh, report. On, on seventeenth, the, uh, had a newcomers' support team meeting, um, and, uh, I, I believe you all got a invite to a grand opening of the newcomers' support team center. Um, uh, that'll be on September seventeenth, um, and, uh, we will hopefully have some refreshments, and, um, you could, uh, meet some of the newcomers, uh, that have arrived within the last five years to the community there. Sorry, I'm just going through my... On the twenty-eighth, uh, had the opportunity to play, uh, August twentieth, uh, to play with, uh, uh, pickleball with Minister Tritten, and that was fun. We had, uh, a few of our, uh, council colleagues there, and, um, not only having, uh, fun with, uh, playing pickleball, but we had the opportunity to discuss, um, a few of the, uh, um, initiatives that, that his, uh, depart, uh, ministry, uh, is undertaking, um, that could help our community as well. And on the, um, sixth September, um, we had the, um, fourth annual cricket carnival on, on Saturday. Uh, had four, uh, five teams coming from, uh, different parts of Alberta, and was a very successful tournament as well. Um, it's about, uh, hundred people from outside of the community, and maybe another hundred from the community just, um, watching the game as well. So, um, thank you to the, uh, administration for helping us with that as well. On the fourth, um, had the opportunity to, uh, go to, uh, an event in Edmonton. Um, Edmonton Newcomers Center, uh, launched a new program for newcomers, uh, in Edmonton. Um, uh, we were invited, uh, as well, so we were able to make a, uh, good connection there, uh, while we, um, tried to understand what we can do in our community. It's very helpful that, um, we don't have to reinvent, invent the wheel. Uh, they've done that for about fifteen years in Edmonton, um, and we can draw from, from their experience to, to do, uh, what we need to do in our community as well. Um, and on, on fifth, uh, of September, another, um, exciting day for Drayton Valley. I was, uh, able to attend the Roots of Resilience Charter School, um, grand opening a- as well. Um, and also, in the evening, Lanterns on the Pond, um, was another successful event. Kudos to the Sustainability Committee and the administration to organizing this, and, you know, when you see the lanterns on the pond and it's dark, it's, it's a beautiful picture there, so thank you for that. I think that's all from me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, councillor McGee?
Well, I, I, I was at Lanterns on the Pond, and, uh, I was... Well, I was at Lanterns on the Pond, and I was, I was away for a week or two, so I didn't have a lot of things going on, and I think there's lots of discussion coming up about the next couple of weeks. But the one I would say was, the highlight for me was the Roots of Resilience. I did get there, and I continue to be amazed at what happens in a short period of time. It could take years to try to get a portable for HTA, and somebody's just started a school in three months, I just think, my goodness. And the, the excitement in the crowd was outstanding, and from parents to grandparents to the kids, they were emceeing, and we had the Lieutenant Governor there, and she spoke from the heart, and she just did a really beautiful job of how coming in as an immigrant and how it, what it means to progress forward. So it was, it was a highlight, and I look forward to how it, I still, I think a little bit, not confused on how it's actually going to work, and the classrooms were all exciting, and I'm just thinking, okay, let's have a look, and we're doing it, and I think that's terrific, and I would say that our administration, through Mr. Vincent and now Jocelyn, carried that ball, and there's no other way that it could have been done as quickly as it was done, because there was a ton of roadblocks that could have been thrown in there, and we just seemed to bypass. Anyway, that was my highlight.
Thank you for your report. Councilor Clark?
Yeah, the highlights, I guess, for me were a couple of things. Doctor recruitment meeting, as a member of the Pembina Physician Recruitment Committee, Mill and I attended that, and just to get an understanding of what others are doing in the province with respect to.
Can you add that to a Melis?
Just in an effort to understand what others are doing in the province and what's working for them and such, so I think it was a good meeting. Not a whole lot of follow-up out of that one, I don't think, but the other thing, so Food Bank, this isn't really council-centric, but I'm on the Food Bank Board, and just one of the things is their, their numbers are record numbers in terms of people using it, and it's going up and up, so, you know, it is a pretty vital thing in this community, the Food Bank and the number of people that use it, so just wanted to say thankful that they're here, so.
Perfect, thank you for your report. Deputy Mayor Sheriffs?
So I did attend a pickleball tournament with Minister Turtin, and I did join a Zoom meeting, excuse me, with the physician recruitment, and it's interesting how some communities are trying to find different ways of recruiting doctors, and it's interesting just hearing about it. Roots of Resilience, Lanterns on the Pond, that's pretty much it for me. You guys pretty much talked about everything that happened in those events, I'm not going to echo it, Lanterns on the Pond was fun as always, Rick and I on the boat and dropping all the lanterns, lining them up, it's, yeah, a lot of fun, a lot of kids wanted to jump on the boat and help, unfortunately, that's not safe, it would have been fun probably, but, yeah, that's all I did.
Yeah, the fire department.
Thank you for your report, for myself as well, Lanterns on the Pond, it's always a lovely annual tradition to see the community come together, I think that every year, there's new people that come, so it's nice. It was a very busy weekend in our community, so I was a little worried that maybe there wouldn't be, you know, a large amount of attendees, but the attendance was great, and it was another spectacular evening, so thanks to everyone for help, support, coming out and putting those lanterns on the pond. I know that there's lots of beautiful pictures and drones and everything that are circulating around, so it's lovely how the community is able to capture that. And as Councilor McGee said, no fire department, I know when we had started this, we had had the fire department always on call just in case, the one year the lanterns had lit on fire and everyone stayed calm, and, and it was Heather Renison that had captured that beautiful moment and wrote a lovely thing on her Facebook post about it, and it was just a reminder of how no panic, community pulling together in just such a beautiful tradition, so it's always a reminder, I really enjoy it, so thanks for everyone for coming out, participating, and making it happen. So I attended also and chaired the second mayor's task force, Homeless Forum, it's going to be a interesting committee, I think it's both challenging and interesting, I will say. We have a lot of experts around the table who are working and dealing with homelessness and poverty in our community on a daily basis, so I really appreciate their expertise at the table and what they bring. We have members at large that have joined our committee, we have five, we have a diverse group of individuals, and it's nice to see so many people come together and voice their concerns and ideas and things like that. I do not believe that we're going to solve this or address this anytime soon, we'll have continual meetings, and we'll kind of iron out some of the solutions to make our community more safe, and I think one of the things that we talked about in it was communication, there's lots of noise in the community about what everyone's role is, what everyone should and shouldn't be doing, and who's to blame and things like this, and I think we need to be reminded that this is a community issue, it is a community challenge, it is global, and there are a lot of people at the table, a lot of people that are volunteering and committed to making a difference, so thank you. And it's important that we decided at the mayor's task force to get a communication fact sheet out there, because there is a lot of false information, a lot of misinformation and lies, so that's something that we will be working on, we'll be talking about what that current situation is, how many actual members there are out there that are living roughly in the community, it's nowhere near what is portrayed on Facebook, we'll talk about the clarifying misinformation, understanding the challenges, the legal and human rights and considerations for these individuals, as well as community and enforcement efforts and safety, so that is a brief update of that, and we'll be getting that communication piece probably, hopefully, out after our next meeting, and just continue communicating what the members are doing and everyone's doing to help address this ever emerging issue in our community, so a little bit of an update there. I continue to sit on the Midsize Towns Mayor's Executive Board and Committee, we had attended a meeting with our C A O and C F O in Pinoka, as well as other C F Os and mayors and C A Os, trying again to advocate, come up with a formula, and presentation to both the Minister of Municipal Affairs and the Premier, again, we have a working group with the province, so it's nice, and I guess just still advocating for additional infrastructure dollars that support our budgets and everyone else's budgets, so thank you to the team for your support and helping with that, because it's a very important work that we need to continue doing, so I really appreciate that. Alberta Days I attended and did the opening speech there at the museum, it was nice to see the community come out and people gather to celebrate the long weekend. I had a meeting with King's University and APSN, that is an association that is the president of all the post-secondary institutes, and with that, it's having a discussion that the town of Drayton Valley can have a seat at that table when they start talking about budget and post-secondary education with the province, so that was a great meeting, and hopefully there's some good potential there. I enjoyed a competitive day with Brazel County and Minister Turtin and learning how to play pickleball, and I never imagined that it was actually that strenuous, I thought it was going to be like pretty laid back, and, you know, we actually hustled, it was 28 out that day, so I'll use that as an excuse, but it was a really nice day to collaborate and work together, and it was nice for the minister to take the time and, and, you know, spend a few hours with us here, so it's important to be building those relationships. I also attended the backpack giveaway with the White Bull at the Mackenzie Conference Center, so I believe there was, I can't remember how many hundreds of kids that came out for that, and just a big thank you to the sponsors and donations that support that in the community. So for me, that is it for my report, and is there a member of council that would like to make a motion to accept the reports as information? Councilor Clark, thank you for that. And then next up, we have council items, 10.1, roundtable discussion. Does anybody have anything? Councilor Gamanna?
Thank you, just a question for the administration. I guess, you know, we have a somewhat unusual summer, this summer, we were having rain in the first part of the summer, and seems to be having nicer weather now. About the splash park, I think our normal routine is that we kind of close it by the long weekend, just wondering, is there opportunity for us to have it longer than that, or if not, you know, is there anything we can do?
Through the chair to Councilor Gamanna, I will have to check and get back to you as to what the schedule is or whether we have the staffing allocations to keep it going longer, so that would have to be something I would get back to you on.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Just a couple of questions with CTC landscaping, I know that's part of our budget, where are we at with that, I believe we applied for a tree grant?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have applied for the grant for the trees, we are waiting on that to see where that comes in at. Beyond that, the in-house stuff that we are capable of doing is, is being accomplished, so.
Perfect, thank you. And then potholes, I know that we had, we've addressed some of the larger potholes, I believe, there was five in the community, those have all been wrapped up, and then what are kind of the plans for the rest of the season?
Madam Mayor, to members of council, the five major potholes that were having to be done by external organizations, some have been completed wholly, others are completed to the gravel level, they had to be completely dug out, we are just waiting on the contractor to come back with their paving crew, it is our understanding they're having some issues with their second crew, so.
Okay, so we'll still see those?
We'll still see them done before snow flies, I would assume, but Mother Nature makes that determination, not me, but the plan is to have them all there, completed to not being blocked off anymore, and we no longer lose cars in them, so.
Perfect. And then two with, I know Councilor Sheriffs and myself were having a conversation the other day just out front here at the Civic Centre, I think we talked about, it was several months ago, a crosswalk going out front of, and this might be a Shelley question, of the building there, just because we were seeing a lot of use, we did a community walk around, and we kind of looked at where, because we do have a lot of residential housing and things around here, and I can't remember what came out of that, I thought we decided that we were going to put a crosswalk from?
It was because of the library and the playpark across the street.
Okay, yeah, right there.
And then kids walking with their teachers or whatnot.
And then the daycare and stuff coming over, could we maybe just check where we were with that?
I can get back to both members of council on that, well, all council on that, again, I don't have previous information on this one, but I will.
Yeah, that was, I think, before you were long in this.
It was, it was last summer, I think, we did that, and there was a couple of things that came out of it, and I'm not sure if it got approved, but it was brought to attention, the building up on a little hill, that's all spray painted, we had a plan of maybe painting it, making it nicer.
Not spray painted.
The playpark, there was a few things that came out of those meetings, if we can maybe have them brought back and.
I can look into them and bring them back, yeah, absolutely.
Councilor McGee?
Yeah, there's, there's a school bus stop there, too, kids all gather, and I don't know how that all works, but they gather and they get bused to school right on that corner, I see that quite often, so there's quite a bit of activity at a certain point in time.
There is, yeah, and we had walked it, actually, it was with Brandy, and we had sat, the day that we had walked it, we'd seen the daycare come, we'd seen all these students and kids, and there was families, so we were kind of, she had brought it to our attention that where it might be good to consider sidewalks, right, that we'd never really walked and looked at, so there was a, I don't know if there was a report or a motion or what, but I thought that we did decide on looking at adding a couple crosswalks, so that might just be a Shelley, yeah.
Even the apartment buildings behind the post office here, there is no sidewalk in front of them, like, there was, there were so many things that came out of our little walk around the block that.
I can address the sidewalk to the post office, Madam Deputy Mayor. Due to parking constraints and sightlines, we cannot go from the end of the alley across to the, to the post office.
No, the apartment that's behind the post, like, north to the post office, there's two apartment buildings.
Right.
There is no sidewalk in front of those apartment buildings at all.
Perfect, I will look into that then, too.
Yeah, and then, yeah, I guess, and then we talked about how that one sidewalk just ends and it doesn't go all the way to Industrial Road, yeah, there was a, we had a list, yeah, maybe just if we can revisit that, or we could make it and then bring it up again in discussion for even G and P or something.
It was interesting, because that day, it just seems like a lot of things happened that made us see things that we weren't even planning on seeing, like the apartment buildings, there was a woman pushing a stroller that came out of the apartment, but she had to walk on the street, and that's when we realized, there's no sidewalk, no wonder she, she can push a stroller on the, on the grass, and she has to go out on the street to walk, so it was just, yeah, it's an interesting area around us here.
Well, yeah, because when you drive, you're not really paying attention, and then when you actually walk it and then you see, and you realize, like, and that was one of the things that we had talked about, is there's actually a lot of residential down in this area, and there's a lot of families, right, that are using or needing access to sidewalks and crosswalks, we have the park, we have, you know, quite a bit, right, so. He didn't have his mic on. Does anybody else have roundtable discussions? I did have one last thing, I had already spoke to Jocelyn a little bit about this, but I'll just bring it up, I had a resident bring it up to me that we have our speed signs throughout the community, the flashing light ones, and they're placed wherever, and he had brought it to my attention that the, the one across from the swimming pool is facing the wrong way, so when you're leaving, I guess, the school and the recreation and the park, as you're going out, it's flashing 30, and when he had brought it up, I said, yeah, it would make more sense to put it on the other side of the road, as you're entering the Ball Diamonds, the pool, the park, the school, and that whole area that you'd slow down, right? So I had asked if we could look into maybe, yeah, it, it's not a one that we can move, but maybe we could circulate one of our other ones or something like we do there, so I just wanted to bring it up in the meeting. Okay, so that's all I have for roundtable discussions, if nobody else has anything else, we have one information item, that is the Brazel Seniors Foundation Meeting Minutes, is there a member of council that would like to make a motion to accept this as information? Councilor McGee, thank you very much for that, and is there a member of council that could move us into closed session, I believe you have the little piece of paper, Council Sheriffs?
I just need to see what time, 10:08. So I'll make a motion that council move into closed session at 10:08 in accordance with the Alberta Access to Information Act, Section 22 to, and Section 24D.
Thank you very much for that, I'll call the motion all in favor. That is carried.